Counsel, if you come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Here.
Butler?
Here.
Carlstone?
Here.
Hopkins?
Present.
Dan Strahan?
Here.
Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
Move.
Support.
DeYoung, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strahan?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, we, it's time we have the opportunity for anyone wishing to address counsel regarding any agenda item. Please step forward to microphone, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Ann Summit, 1435 Hazel Street. I'm gonna read really fast so I can get in my three minutes. Each of us has to be accountable. We must be accountable with our money, our family, our jobs, our health, and the list goes on. In order to be accountable, we must know the facts that surround what it is we need to be accountable for. For example, if a doctor, if I go to the doctor and I'm having an illness and they just look at me and they say, oh, you have stage two cancer. Well, that's not quite right. You have to do tests and things to find out what's truly going on. Then you get the plan, and then you proceed with your treatment. If there's a couple that wants to build a house and they go in for a $2 million mortgage to the banker, does the banker just give them the money? No. They have to go through financial statements to see if they qualify. Does the banker have to dig deep to see if they would be able to handle such a mortgage? Yeah, they do. There's laws and regulations in place for this. As citizens of Pella, we need accountable information as well. It feels as if the rec center proposal has been a roller coaster ride. First, we have a plan, then another. Then we hear that so much money has been pledged, but we, what we don't hear is what the entire cost of the plan is. Does it include the University Street Extension? Maybe it does, I don't know. How much will it cost to join the rec center? How much will it cost to maintain? What will it cost to staff, and who will be staffing this? Also, has the community center update been removed from the rec center amount and placed into its own account? How much of the pledged money will be going to the community center? Also, what is the amount of Pella's cash on hand? And how much has already been spent for the rec center? Like a doctor or a banker, we need to gather reliable and trustworthy information first. The information must be obtained from reputable sources with all the facts shared with the citizens of Pella. The least you, as the city council can do, is see that this happens in light of the fact that we, the city, citizens, have not been able to vote directly on the building of the rec center. We voted on the lost tax to help support it, yes. And if this is in limbo, the lost tax, things aren't going real well with that right now, what happens? Where do we stand? We're not sure. This is all coming to a head. Please, do research about what the citizens are feeling. First, include how many people and how much they are willing to support this, for they will be paying for this for a long, long time. Then, put together a comprehensive plan of all costs related to this project, along with projected costs to join. The people who elected you deserve more, much more substantial information before moving ahead and taking this significant project on. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anita Fisher, 1546 Pleasant Drive. I'd like to just express that I feel the same way Ann does. There's a lot of people that have been talking to me and other citizens about this very same thing. And I'd like to say there's a reason that these, these things take years and years and years to go through. We want to make sure that if we do it, we do it right. We want to make sure that the citizens have all the information so that they know, they know which direction we need to go with this. And I hope you guys are willing to discuss this further to give us more information. Also, I want to say, do you guys have anybody that is in charge of looking at, like, the Tulip Tower? Do we have a structural engineer that looks at this stuff?
Yeah, staff is continually evaluating all of our properties, yes.
They, they do do that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Because this is definitely a structural engineer issue. So I want to say for my final thought, is that I hope we don't let our things in Pella, like the Tulip Tower, like the roads, everything like that, continue to be put on the back burner while the rec center is always on the forefront. That's responsible. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Sean Borde, my husband and I own End Out Meat Market in Butchers Creek, Iowa. 820 and 22 Main Street. I'm here on a totally different subject, and want to talk about Thursday nights in Pella and Farmer's Market and the cost to downtown business retail. The original purpose for longtime Pella members or people, the original purpose of Thursday nights in Pella was to draw people downtown to do their shopping. We have strayed from that, and it has become very, very costly to the downtown. And while it's a wonderful family event, it is far from helpful in creating business for the retailers and/or the restaurants in downtown. The fact is that the downtown businesses are your brick and mortar, we're paying your property taxes. With a quick count today, I counted 41 businesses on the square that survive as small businesses that you are closing the streets for and closing down Thursday. Infeld's books, I do the books, I can tell you, I can look at Thursday nights. Infeld's and Butchers alone on a small night loses $1,500 on a Thursday night in Pella. If you took those 41 businesses and you multiplied it by 500, a minimal amount, that's 20 grand to every, for every Thursday night in Pella. You're closing Main Street for Farmer's Market, that's 40 some parking spots. You're closing the other two Franklin Streets. If you add those together, you're closing close to 100 parking spots. When you do that, so I come to, from out of town and I want to shop, there's nowhere to go, I would keep driving. The second thing is restrooms. We get Farmer's Market, we get all your wonderful park people, and because we have to provide a restroom, they come and use our restrooms. I know that's not a big deal, it's expensive. Plumbing, toilet paper, soap, whatever you want to say, it's expensive. On the third item, food trucks. How would you like it if I came and parked my, what Jerry's example was, I could go put a tent up, sell Pella bologna in front of Ulrich's, ask for a permit, and you guys would grant one, and I could come with my little food truck and sell my Pella bologna right in front of Ulrich's Meat Market. What would that do? It's creating a we versus them. We are all for family events, all for quality of life. But what you're doing is costing the downtown. There are so many other locations, so many other options. What about the parking lot behind Infeld's by the Towncrier? What about using the brick street by the windmill that's almost impassable for two-way traffic anyway? Why are we shutting Main Street and Franklin Street down and being detrimental to the businesses? Why are we bringing food trucks to your event when you've got six restaurants and up to 12 food businesses that could be open? How would you like it if somebody came and sold cookies outside of your bakery? That's just an example. Jamie Feenstra went to Pace's meeting and voiced his concern, and they asked surprise. This issue has been going on with Pace versus Downtown and Thursday nights since Jerry bought the business in 2011. And slowly on, it's creeping back to take more and more of the square. And so I ask you to consider the cost of Thursday nights in Pella. The parking spaces start going away at noon. The stores, everything, the streets start closing at 3:00. That's prime business time for people getting off work. Nobody comes uptown unless they're coming for Thursday nights in Pella. So please consider your brick and mortar retail. It shouldn't be an us versus them issue. It should be a cooperation to create family events that benefit everybody.
Sean, can I, don't, don't leave.
Oh, great.
You know, there are pieces of this that, that I have looked at for years. And one in particular is Farmer's Market. And I continually beg to have some of these activities moved to Codwell Park. The Shelter House is indicative to allow these vendors not to have to carry, set up, it could be rain, sleet, snow, sunshine down at Codwell Park. There's a huge grassy knoll for families to sit and have picnic, there's volleyball, there's basketball.
Ample parking.
So, I, I, I do agree with you. I think there are times we have to look at things and we have to think, where do we have safer space? And, and it is difficult to compete.
What's happening is everybody wants to be downtown, which is great. We have a wonderful historic downtown. But when you bring hundreds of people to downtown, it clogs everything. Thus, shutting down everything business-wise. Jerry and I are working 70 hours a week, our daughter's here, ask her, I'm not lying, to keep the doors open.
Great.
You've got many mom and pop shops doing the exact same thing, and you're bringing a food truck in, selling barbecue across the street from my barbecue restaurant, and I'm paying property taxes. I get it, everybody loves a food truck. Go to West Market Park, go to a parking lot somewhere. Don't take my parking place to bring your food truck downtown. Downtown isn't the only great place in Pella to hold these events. Every race, every event, everybody wants to be downtown.
Right.
We've gotta start considering some of the outlying areas as just as wonderful a place. Why wouldn't all these families drive to Codwell?
I, I have no idea, because I think it's a wonderful remedy.
Oh, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for having the courage to do that.
Well, it was Jerry's job, but he's busy.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Any motion, motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So who?
Mr. Ryland?
Or?
DeYoung? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strahan?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on, public hearing regarding a rezoning application submitted by ATI Group to amend the property located west of Five Field Road and north of Highway G-28, Agricultural A1 to Plant Unit Development, PUD. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And for those in attendance, and those watching at home on Pella Fiber, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation this evening. This rezoning request comes to us tonight from the ATI Group, and what we're looking at is just shy of 26 acres on the western side of our community. Now specifically, what we have over here, just orientate folks, the area that we're talking about for the new housing development, proposed new housing development, is this highlighted area located right here. The existing Prairie Ridge Development, which is approximately 27 acres and includes 93 single-family homes, along with roughly about 38, I believe, townhome developments, is located right here. Allred Ford Dealership is located right over here. Washington Street, Highway G-28 is located right down here, and the new Five Field Road extension is located up here. Now, tonight's rezoning request, the request is to rezone the property from A1 Agricultural over to what's called a planned unit development. And we'll be explaining the planned unit development as we go through the presentation this evening. But it's important with any planned unit development, we always have a base zoning district. And in this particular case, what we have, and this really serves as the basis for the proposed ordinances, the base zoning district is R-1B, which is medium-density residential. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the intent of the PUD or the rezoning request that we're considering this evening is to provide patio-type housing, is really geared towards those individuals 55 years and older that are looking to right-size their living arrangements on it. And so what the developer ultimately intends to do is create 83 single-family residential lots. And we do have some highlights of some of the proposed housing up here, along with the floor plans for the housing units as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, anytime we talk about a planned unit development, it's important to know that we're talking about what's commonly referred to as a negotiated process. So in cases like this, they're usually reserved for what's identified as a community need. And when we look at housing in Pella, housing has been identified both in the city's comprehensive plan and recent housing analysis as a need for the city of Pella. In fact, in the Marion County Housing Assessment that was done in 2017, at that time, it identified an additional 966 housing units which would need to be constructed by the year 2025 to meet the community's housing needs. That amounts to about a 15% increase in our housing stock, which is a huge number. But it's also important to note that when we talk about housing, particularly housing that's geared for individuals 55 years and older, that the housing assessment identified at the time roughly 309 housing units that would need to be constructed to meet demand within our community. As of this date, we've only constructed 54 housing units. So we believe the product that's being proposed by the developer this evening is needed in Pella. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, like any rezoning request, it's always important to look at the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan serves as a guide at any time we consider rezoning requests. And in this particular instance, we have a couple of items that we want to point out. When we talk about compliance or conformity with the city's comprehensive plan, we're looking at the full document, roughly 140 pages. Couple key items to note. Comprehensive plan has strategic priorities that are listed in the plan. Housing was a key strategic priority that was listed in the plan. We believe that housing priority continues to be a strategic priority for the city of Pella. But equally important to note, if you recall, when we looked at the opening map and saw where this property was, it was just south, I believe, of the Prairie Ridge Development. And in 2019, the city council zoned that particular property, which is 27 acres, for residential development. So when we look at the future, you slam map, consider the housing's a key strategic need. The city council has recently rezoned property that is adjacent to this parcel for housing. That leads us to believe the location has been analyzed for housing, has been previously approved, that general area for housing developments. In addition, housing is, continues to be a strategic need for the city of Pella. So our opinion is, and this is the staff's opinion, that the development that we are considering this evening conforms to the city's comprehensive plan. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as we stated with PUDs, this is a negotiated process, and it usually involves projects that are identified as a community need. And in this particular case, we believe housing is needed in Pella. In particular, housing for individuals 55 years and older is identified as a need as well. Now, with the negotiated process, what we're really stating is there's some items that we're going to be explaining tonight, where the developer is going above and beyond city standards. That's to the benefit of the city of Pella. There's also what would be commonly referred to as waivers within the zoning code that allows the development to proceed. Those would be to the benefit of the developer. So it's a negotiated process that we're going through this evening with the planned unit development. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And I believe we've covered a lot of these items that we have, but there's just more schematic elevations. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the development is concerned this evening, the ordinance refers to an exhibit A. That means the developer has to follow the plans and outlines what we're locating right here. So Phase 1, I believe, is roughly 37 housing units on it, and the rest of the 83 would be built in Phase 2 on the development. Once again, we have Five Field Road down here as well. So when the developer goes through the subdivision process and the plating process on this, this is the outline that they will be required to adhere to if city council approves the rezoning request this evening. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as some of the elevations what we have in, have in the PUD, the developer on the homes that will be constructed on the property will need to follow what's listed in the packet, the rezoning ordinance. And these are some of the examples that we're giving on the homes. What the hope is, is that, not the hope, but the requirement is, is when the developer builds the homes on the lot, this is what they're going to look like. And we believe they're upper-scale homes that is being proposed by the developer on it. So if you wanted to look in this, we have a lot of details in the packet. Jerry Vitas can help us through if there's any questions on what's being proposed as far as the individual zoning waivers. But the main trade-off that we're considering this evening is the design of the homes and the layout of the lots of the homes that is being proposed. And so, Mr. Mayor, in summary, staff believes this ordinance meets the requirements of the city's zoning ordinance. We also believe it meets, is in conformity with the city's comprehensive plan. And finally, I'd like to mention that the planning and zoning commission did consider this, that their proposed ordinance, at their January 22 meeting, unanimously approved the ordinance that we are considering this evening. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Mandy, any written comments received?
No comments.
Counsel, comments?
I think they're nice-looking homes. They're very thoughtfully designed.
I, I like the idea of this, you know, we're having this discussion about affordable housing, that this just creates more opportunity for people who, you know, to, to move into their next home and, and open up houses for sale. So I, I like the idea from a housing standpoint, not just for 55-plus, but for folks who would, you know, be, be buying houses that they would not have.
If I remember right, this is not one of the 55-plus, is that my imagination?
No, no, you are correct, Councilmember DeYoung. It's available for anyone to purchase on it, but the development and really the marketing to it is geared toward 55.
Gotcha.
So I know we have representatives from ATI here, if you want to ask them any questions, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to answer too.
For Denny Byers, and I notice there's two additional entrances up to the highway there. That's all, that are okay.
Well, that's Five Field. Yeah, we'd call that highway. Five Field is considered a collector, not an arterial. I'm sorry. Arterial is what we've started to describe.
But that, but that, that road is, is basically opposing the, the turn to go to Chick-fil-A, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's not even on, it's not even on Five Field then? Access to the development.
Right across from that cul-de-sac.
Yeah. The development of Bud's Five Field Road and the entrance roads will come off, the entrance and exit roads on both Phase 1 and Phase 2 will come off Five Field Road. But there won't be G-28 or Washington Street. What's that?
There is no new exit.
No, no, everything will be on the existing Five Field Road. It's just south of the Prairie Ridge Development.
Anything else, counsel? Okay, any comments from any member of the audience on this particular item? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Support.
DeYoung, Carlstone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strahan?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to ordinance number 1034, entitled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa, by changing, changing the zoning classification of property located west of Five Field Road and north of Highway G-28, City of Pella, Marion County, Iowa. This is the first reading. Anything to add, Mike?
No, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Support.
Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strahan?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, moving on to resolution number 6660, Enfile the Resolution of Pella City Council Approving Final Plaid of Corridor, Corridor Business Park. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, we have a final plaid that's being proposed this evening for the corridor, corridor business park subdivision, which is submitted by the developer ATI. And the area that we are talking about this evening is this yellow highlighted area right up here. Oskaloosa Street is located to the north right here. Pelacrisian Grade School, uh, High School, excuse me, is located right over here. Now, the lot that we're considering this evening, when we use the terminology final plaid, there's two types of plaid. The preliminary plaid is the overall game plan and contains the infrastructure requirements for the development. The final plaid that we're considering this evening needs to be in conformance with the preliminary plaid, which was previously approved by the Pella City Council on it, and is used for land transferable purposes, or land transfer purposes this evening that we're considering. So let's go ahead, Mandy. And I believe we went through all of this up here. Once again, one of the requirements under the city zoning code is the plaid that we are considering this evening aligns and conforms with the previously approved preliminary plaid for the development. And we, the staff, believe it does this evening. It is also important to note that the developer has submitted the required performance bond for the sanitary sewer maintenance extension to the site. And it also has been approved by the city attorney as well. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as our overall review, it is important to note that we believe the plaid that we're considering this evening meets the zoning and subdivision ordinances, and also complies with the previously approved preliminary plaid that was approved by the Pella City Council. All legal documents have been received and approved by the city attorney, and as a result, staff is recommending approval this evening. Equally important to note that the planning and zoning commission considered this plaid after January 22 meeting and unanimously approved the plaid. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Support.
Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strahan?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6661, entitled Resolution Ordering Construction of the Pella Indoor Recreation Aquatic Center and Fixing a Date for Hearing Thereon and Taking of Bids Therefore. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, what we have this evening is a resolution which simply does a couple things. It establishes April 2nd as the public hearing date for the proposed indoor recreation center. And it also authorizes staff to seek bids for the project. Now, the project that we are discussing this evening, to summarize, is going to be bid in base bid and alternate bid components. The base bid that we're talking about this evening is just shy of 64,000 square feet, and I'll go over this here very soon. The alternate bid is roughly another 15,000 square feet on it. Now, the easiest way to distinguish between the base bid and the alternate bids that we're talking about this evening is everything that you see that has this black highlighted area around it is identified as an alternate. So in this particular case, when we talk about the alternate bids, we have two full-sized gymnasiums that are planned to be bid as alternates on it. And in addition, when you look at this recreational swimming pool or the rec pool, that will be bid as an alternate. The base bid includes an indoor turf field for that, that area. And the reason why we're structuring this is when the contractors review bids and they receive the bid packages, the base bid is what the city is stating, is there's a high probability that we will proceed with the base project. If the bids come in favorable, or if the city has additional financial resources, we may construct these items that are highlighted as alternates. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the opinion of probable cost that we're considering this evening, the engineer's base bid opinion of probable cost was just shy of 27.6 million dollars. The alternate bid items that we talked about this evening are right at 8 million dollars. And if council were to approve this resolution, what we would have, and this is a correction in the resolution, Janet, I believe that date is actually March 22nd, is that correct?
Correct, March 22nd.
Yeah. So we'll have to correct the resolution, but the bid letting date will be on March 22nd. Equally important to note, as far as the city's budget work sessions that we have planned for this upcoming, upcoming year, those are on the 25th and 26th. And so we'll actually have our construction numbers, our bid numbers during our budget deliberations that we have as well. The public hearing for the project would be on April 2nd. If council were to proceed with the construction- If council were to proceed with the construction contract on that evening, the completion date for the project would be somewhere right around 18 to 24 months. Looking at it from the engineer's standpoint, we would like, we're planning from a staff standpoint, that it'd be about two full years worth of construction. So once again, to summarize, what we're simply doing this evening is two things. Authorizing April 2nd is the proposed public hearing date for the indoor recreation center project. The second item that you're authorizing is staff to solicit bids for this project. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes the staff's presentation. We'll be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, can I get a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I think a motion that we table this ordinance as a resolution until after the budget is done.
I'd support that.
Okay, it's moved and supported that we would table this resolution until, when would that be?
We would have, the budget work sessions are March 25th and 26th, and so we would have to back the project up to where we would consider this resolution after that date, our next meeting, and that we would consider this item would likely be on April 2nd on that, and then we potentially have a bid letting date potentially early May of this year.
Okay. So, motion on the floor, we certainly have discussed, the motion is to table it until after budget session. That's been seconded, so now we have opportunity for discussion.
John, would you anticipate? If we got a number, let's say we put it out for bid right now, and we actually have a hard number on March 20th. So then, when we went to budget sessions, which were when?
The 25th and 26th.
So we would actually have a number that we can work with in budget sessions?
Well, that, that.
We're not guaranteed, we're not, that doesn't make us have to do anything with it, we just simply have numbers, right?
Well, that's true. However, when I look at the number of items that we have on our schedule here, we've got to deal with an airport issue, we've got the ambulance, we've got streets and sewers that we've been behind on for a while. And I just think we need to not have any pressure on us to skip anything that's on the need list, getting and trying to get to this rec center. If the rec center is going to happen, it's going to happen. I remember Jeanette, the director of Parks and Rec, said we need to analyze all of what we have. And I found out today that Central College has five gymnasiums, and each of the high schools have two. And, and we just, we need to, and Central College put out a big program about working with the city, coordinating to help each other out. And so I think that we need to examine some of these other alternatives before we jump off the, off the, out of the gate.
Sure.
And, and, and I've put bids together for projects, nothing like this, Mike, but I have done bidding work, and it's a lot weird. And I, I don't want to run over and ask some guy for a bid on a very complicated project, and then, then we discover that, well, hey, we can work with Central and the high schools and, I, I talked to, I talked to a guy up in Sioux Center, and he said, "Why does Pella have three football fields?" You know, and I've wondered that. Because when I grew up in Texas, there were six high schools in Fort Worth, and we had one municipal football field, and we all got along just fine with one field.
Yeah.
And I think it still stands for some, built some while, I can't tear it down. Anyhow, I just think that we don't need to rush it so much. One more thing, I was, I traveled, we drove up to Nevada Sunday. They just opened a recreational center that they've been working on for 20 years, and it cost $7.7 million. No swimming pool. They said if we'd have built a pool, it would have tripled the price. But they had beautiful, this beautiful facility, I've got a lot of pictures, I'll share them with you. And they've got gymnasiums, you know, for $7.7 million, so today it may be $9 million, and because of inflation and everything. But we need to figure out exactly what we need, I think. I know, I know a group has worked on this, but, and then the other, the other big issue that I see is that Smash Park went out of business. Why did they go out of business? Well, they didn't work getting enough business. And maybe they couldn't get enough employees. And I, I view that as Canary and the Coline. And they were an operation that was trying to make money. Our rec center will not be so concerned about making money.
Sure.
I mean, so I, I just slowed down.
Yeah, so I have, I have two questions, and I don't, and I don't want them to seem snarky at all. So if you were going into a budget meeting, you're a CPA, right? If you're going into a meeting, do you want, do you want all the numbers, or do you want some of the numbers? Yeah, I, obviously, we know the answer to that question. Secondly, you would want, you would want all the numbers. So like, if, if we, if we push this back and we don't have the numbers for, for our budget session, we literally won't have all the numbers to make good decisions, because that won't negate any of the other things that are important, would it? Like, if we, if the, if the, well, if, if the rec center comes in and it's, actually, it's 27 million, let's just call it that. Now we know, and we can say, well, it's, that's a good number, or it doesn't work, or whatever. So to me, it seems like we're talking about two different issues. One is, should we get a number, and should we have a number? And the second is, should we act on it? Those are two different, two different discussions. And one, it seems like we should absolutely get the number, so that we have it. The second one is, well, that's going to be up for debate once we get the number, right? Does that, does that make sense to you?
It does make some sense, it's just that, I think, I think when we get through the budget process and we properly fund all these issues that are on the table, we're going to discover we can't.
Well, maybe we're, or maybe we're going to discover, shoot, we should have had numbers, well, so that we.
We can still get numbers. We can always get numbers.
We just had a presentation criticizing us for not coming forth with enough information.
And what?
Let's get the bids and provide the public.
And what they wanted was numbers.
Well, that's true, but, but we can produce a lot of numbers and get a lot of opinions without putting somebody through the bid process yet.
Yeah, but with the bid, then your opinion is over, and it's actual numbers.
Okay.
Then we have something to.
Then we actually know what we're talking about, like, yes, it's possible, or no, it's not.
Well, you know somewhat what we're talking about. 27 million and, and the road, that doesn't include the road out there, the right away of the road, and.
And I just want to make sure that we're, like, that we're talking about two, we're literally talking about two different things. One, let's, should we get a number or not? The answer is unequivocally yes. The second one is, should we act on it? That is up for debate, and I, and I'm, I'm on board with that discussion, should we act on it? But the first issue, should we get a number? The people want a number. Everybody wants to know, so why would we, why would we push it down the road? I think, I think Ann wants a number, right? Wants to know what's it going to cost. She, she talked to us about that this afternoon already in, in open forum. So that's, it's something that, to me, seems like, no, let's get the number, and then we know.
Well, and this resolution includes a date for hearing thereon and taking the bids there, therefore. So it's like, and, and you got a date of March 22nd to open the bids, and the bidders kind of want to know shortly after that what's going to happen.
Yep.
And so then, then you have a lot of pressure on you to, to say yea or nay.
Sure.
And, and I just think that we can project what that thing is going to cost to run. We can project what it's going to cost to belong, and that's what we need to tell the community, and then we need to tell the community how much their taxes might go up, because we can get pretty close to that, I bet. How much, how much will your taxes go up to support this rec center?
Can, can you, can you agree with me? I, I think you can. Can you agree with me that it would be good to have a number, a hard bid number?
Well, I.
But, yes, yes or no?
Well, that's.
Because the answer is yes, you don't want to say it.
No, I don't want to say it, but, yeah, it'd be good to have a hard number, but we have some pretty good numbers. We've had, we've talked a lot of engineers.
These, these, these numbers, this, this number could be 50 million or it could be 20.
Right.
Until we know.
And then you already have to add 5.5 million for the road construction. So already that 27, 570 is going to be, there will be something added to it, plus it's going to be higher than that.
Yep, and what, what we're talking about.
But let's know, let's know what the number is.
Yeah, what we're.
How could, we cannot make any decisions until we know what the numbers are.
But I think.
And I've said all along, we won't build more than we can afford, but we won't know what, what that is until we know what the number is. We've already spent a million and a half dollars designing, so we've got to know what the number is, is we're going to be able to proceed. And, and there's, I, you know, I know I've said it 100 times, but there's 15 and a half million dollars of private money that's sitting there in support of this project. You go to Nevada and you talk to them people, find out how much private money they got to build their $7 million project.
They got the whole thing privatized.
Okay, for $7 million. You go to the Rex, the Rexplex in West Des Moines, $30 million project in a huge city, they got $10 million of private money. We're way ahead of everybody when it comes to the support we're getting privately for this project. So if we suddenly decide we're not going to, we're not going to even explore getting what it actually would cost, you're going to go back to all those people and tell them why we aren't going to accept their money.
And I think it's just.
I'll do that.
I think the.
I'll do that.
Okay.
I think the important thing.
You won't have much fun, I can promise you that.
You know, but those people are, are generous, and yet, they'll give their money to something else.
I'm, I'm, here's, here's what I'm.
I don't think they will.
I'm still trying to, I'm still trying to get my mind around, we're not talking about spending this money on this decision. We're talking about, we're talking about getting a number.
No spending decision is made tonight.
This is not a spending decision, this is a budget decision.
The way this resolution reads, it kind of all ties very much together. They don't look very separated to me as I read the resolution.
So here's, here's how I've done, I've literally done hundreds of public bids. I'm not, not joking. This is going to go out to bid, and contractors, you know, there's going to be a handful of general contractors who are going to bid this job. They're going to submit the bids, it's going to be a public opening, and then we're going to have, how many ever numbers there are. Just let's say there's going to be four or five numbers, great, for this project. We're going to get those numbers, and we're going to sit down and say, we'll have those numbers for our budget session. So we can sit down and look at them and say, oh, this, either this makes sense. We can dig into everything, all the, the parts and pieces of it. And if it makes sense, great, if it doesn't, then, then we table it. So we, we haven't spent, we've already spent the money that we're going to spend to get this number. So it'd be silly to not get it, and then we can make a decision during budget session. Are you tracking with me? Like, that's, we're, this is, this is not a vote to spend this money. This is a vote to figure out how much it's actually going to cost. And until we know that, we're arguing about fake things.
I don't think that anyone up here is saying that we're not going to get that number. I think, and, and please, John, tell me if I'm wrong. I think what John is saying, and I have to say, you know, I, I was concerned last budget session as well. I need to know how much it is going to cost to support financially the ambulance, Public Works, Parks and Rec, the police department, and I need to know how much money it's going to take to support them well, to see if there is even enough to support this project. We're not, he's not saying, "I never want to get this bid." He's saying, "Not now, not now. Let's support the people that are in the back of the room. Let's support the departments on the sides of the room, see how much that's going to take us." We, there are financial concerns that are arising by the day right now. And, and concerns will come up in budget season that we are all totally unaware of until we hear from these departmental heads. So he's not saying we're not going to get the number, he's just saying, "Not now." And what would it hurt? What is it going to hurt? Somebody could say, "You know what, I'm not going to bid that project, I said it was supposed to come in 30 days ago." Nope, don't want a thing to do with it. What would it hurt? But I don't know what I need in the coffers to give Greg and his staff the support they need. And I don't know what streets are in Denny's budget. And I know there are a couple in there that if they're, if they're not in that budget, dang gum, I'm going to find, how, find the money for them. So I think.
We need all that information.
We do.
Boom, boom, boom.
We do.
And boom.
We do.
Then you got it all.
All he's saying, don't do it, don't do it now.
To what purpose? That's no different than saying, well, we don't need the budget from, from Greg.
No, not in the least, because that is an assigned department that's fully functioning in the city and is for the betterment and the health and safety of this community at this time. That's what we are charged to do. That's all he's saying. He's just saying, let's, let's get an idea, let's see where we're at, and then let's get the bid. Let's not have all of these other things mixing in with what we're charged to do.
So, so I'm going to ask this question.
Sure.
And this is.
I like your question.
You might not like this one.
You might not like my answer.
So here's my concern.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I'll put it a different way, I'm not going to ask a question. I'm going to, my concern is that the hang up with getting a number, a budget number, like, if, I'm, I'm just going to say something silly. Let's say I had a, I had a hang up with the street department. I didn't, I didn't like the street department. And I'd say, "Denny, I don't want your budget numbers, because I'm going to make sure that the, the fire department and the police department and Parks and Rec, they have their money, so I don't want your number." Okay? That's, that's obviously silly, if I would say that. So my, here's what I'm concerned about. My concern is that the reason we wouldn't want this number that will cost us nothing, it's a number that we're going to get bids. Again, back to my, what I've done, I've done a lot of bids that haven't gone forward. It's just part of the game as a contractor. My concern is that we don't want this number because it's a political issue, because it's, it's a hot button issue, obviously. And it's not because it's the best thing for us, or the best thing for us to, that it's, that it's better for us not to have the numbers. It's actually because it's a political issue. And, and so I'm, I'm making my stand as against the rec center or for the rec center when, when actually what we should be doing is saying, yeah, we want as much information as we can get so that we can make good decisions. And it's not going to negate any other decisions that, you know, if I, if I needed to, if I had a, wanted a new car, and I want a nice car, and I decided I'm going to get a $100,000 car, whatever, and I realized, once I had the number from the dealership, that I'm not going to be able to afford groceries. Well, I'm not going to buy a car, because I'd be silly, right? And that's what, that's what we're doing here. We're not saying, we're not going to buy the groceries, we're not going to pay for the ambulance or the streets. What we're saying is, I need to know so that we can make good decisions. Are you, you tracking with me?
I, I am.
And that's, that's kind of, that's kind of like a, I'm not trying to be like.
No.
Whatever, I'm just saying, is, is it actually a good decision to not get the number? Or is it kind of a political statement? That's, I'm not trying to be offensive at all.
Well, that's fine, that's fine. I think, no, it is not a political stance. What it is, is it's smart to see what our departments need to run before we go off on another project, because we could see that we need to completely help out Greg and his ambulance. You know, there, he has a real problem on his hands. We have issues with our water department, and we have issues with our airport. I need to know from these department heads, and I need an honest number from these department heads, unafraid that they have to chop their budget in order to support another project. I need for them to be freely. I need for them to be freely, give me that number without thinking, well, I gotta cut this or that there because I know that there's another project down the turnpike. That's what I'm saying. I need honesty and transparency in our departments so that we can fully fund them so that they don't have a number for another project right here and, and think, you know, I can't have this. I can't have the rig because I have to shove that money over to the rep center. It isn't a political statement. I think it's a wise decision, and I fully support just cabling it, just wait.
So one, one, you, you fear you're not gonna get honest answers from the departments.
I want honest answers from the.
You don't think you're gonna get them?
I think that if there's a looming project and a number out there, you might see them thinking, well, you know.
Do, do you guys feel like you would do that?
Well, that.
How many budget sessions have you sat in?
Six.
And they all bring their needs, and we look at those.
That's right.
And very, very seldom do we challenge the department heads.
You know what, I'm not challenging the department heads, you heard me in breath lately, I am supporting the department heads. I'm supporting them and get, bringing to me every number they need to have the department that they want.
So then why not have all the numbers?
I want all the numbers from our current departments.
You say you don't want that number?
I, now, don't, don't word salad me, because you know, that's just really kind of. I want to get through budget first, see what it takes to run this community, and then get that second bid to see if we can afford it. That's it.
So, so if, if we did, I'll just ask this question.
Sure.
So if we went through the budget session.
Uh-huh.
Then you guys would approve to put this out for bid?
Yeah, that's all we ask, Tom.
So, so.
I, I just don't want the interference of the pressure on what we're doing to take care of all these departments. We've got a big challenge at this airport, it's big, and, and the ambulance has been a big thing. The golf course is grinding up money. I mean, we just, we just need to get our hands around all that stuff. And, and we should be, it, the target was two percent of our streets every year, and we've been at the low end of that for years. We need to be at four percent. We need to really hit these streets. The sewer, I just found out, the sewer in front of my brand new house is a hundred years old. Wow, you know, that's amazing. It's still working, but, but so there's just so much deferred maintenance around town that I just think we, we need to be a little bit careful here before we just launch. Even if we get the numbers, what are you gonna do? You get the numbers, say, oh, and we get through the budget and say, oh my gosh, uh, we gotta, hey, we gotta raise more money, well, that's fine. Um, or we need to rethink what we need. I think we need to rethink what we need. I think we need to take Central College up on, on their offer to work with us, and we can start utilizing some of their facilities and help them build a soccer field or whatever. Work together. Three football fields, holy cats, you know, blows me away.
You mentioned Central, Orange City has one football field.
Yeah, okay.
Well.
That's irrelevant to this discussion. Well, 'cause we have three, we have three of them, and they're all, and they're all just being replaced, so. They're here, however it happened, it happened, they're here, that's irrelevant to this discussion.
And we have the airport that has to be, we have to do something with the airport. That is there, and it's a, it generates, um, economic activity for Kellum, a lot of economic activity, but it's there, it's in process.
Well, you tell that to Pella Corporation then.
And I think our, our airport runs in black, I think to the tune of seven million dollars.
We sat through a couple weeks ago the strategic plan session. We heard all our department heads, who, we all agree do a great job, I think they're honest, so I think that's what you were saying. And we heard from Jeanette as well, and her role is very much more a lifestyle and quality of life than is the street catalyst, right? There's some lack of quality of life when you're jingling down university, right? But the street, uh, street department have different aims than Parks and Rec does. One's quality of life and one's more classically infrastructure. And so we heard every department head's opinions, and we heard clearly from all of them, what their strategic goals were. And we heard from Jeanette that, you know, she knows there's five gems on Central's campus, and there's still a need. I went to a swim meet, uh, in Knoxville this weekend, and it, it's just not ideal. It works well for Knoxville, but we could do better here for our swimmers and so on and on it goes. So I happen to agree with Dave here that these are two different debates. I think it'll be a nice robust debate about whether or not the rec center is the right thing for us, affordable for us, et cetera. But I agree with him that, that's not necessarily what this step is. And I think it's not fair to Jeanette for her to have to do her budget without knowing what her budget can be, because we haven't gotten it yet. But we're, we're gonna give Denny about three percent raise in his budget, 'cause he does streets. And we're, I mean, values are up to the individual, pluralistic culture that we live in, so somebody very much may value a swimming pool over, uh, preferably asphalted street or a two-year-old sewer for that matter. So I, I think we have to be careful with how we, in our own viewpoints, value some departments over others. And I think this step is merely about getting the right number to be able to see if we can afford it. No one, no one would buy a car, I would never buy a hundred thousand dollar car, Dave, no one would. No one would build a house, no one would, whatever, until you can do a number. And these are guesses, maybe good guesses, maybe not, but you don't know. And so I think it's, I think we did hear clearly, people want more information. I think the information is often available, it's just not always interpretable. Um, and this is a spot where we're trying to get more information, and then we get the lively debate about whether or not it's a right one, that's the city for us at this time.
So we're, we're basically, we gotta vote on it?
We have, we have a motion on the floor to table it.
Okay.
Uh, I think what I heard was until after the budget sessions, so that we will have to vote on that.
That is never said, I mean.
It was supported, yes. John made it, uh, Mr. Ireland said, uh, supported, so we're in the discussion phase right now.
I think we discussed it out.
Make sure everybody has a chance for, to say what they want to say.
I, I, I thought of everything that I could to convince you guys otherwise.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is that we would table this, uh, resolution number six, 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 one, until after the budget, so that would put us at what, April, or March four?
Um, after the budget work sessions, the twenty fifth and twenty sixth, and Mandy, I, I think our next council.
April second.
April second.
Sorry, April second. So we're putting it off about six weeks. So that's the motion on the floor.
Does that put it past, um, possible for this, the planned building season? If it doesn't go on this budget discussion, I mean, it's a, a year out effectively, correct? I'm not a skipper.
Let me, I'm, I'm gonna try to answer the question. Generally, it's advisable to bid, build the bid projects early in the spring on it.
Doesn't necessarily. I don't think that's the question he's asking.
What, it is.
Uh, he's asking, does it kick the actual budget of it to the next budgeting season, not bidding season?
No, we, we can still seek bids on April second, but I, I thought you were asking, would it delay the project past the two years?
Well, if we, if we, if we solidify the budget in the sessions, then I'll come out with that with a proposal to approve the budget. And we don't know the number for this, even though it, it's effectively not in this year's budget then. We're still operating on these kind of.
Well, we'll have to use estimates, so if council proceeds and that'll be in the budget, then you'll, you'll go through a bid letting, and we'll have the numbers probably if you use the same date, would be early May.
Which is late in the bidding season then.
That is correct.
So that could effectively kick it down to.
Yeah, you'll, you'll lose quality contractors and.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to, uh, table resolution number six, 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 one, until, uh, our council meeting in April, on April four. Uh, so we are ready.
April second.
Or, I'm sorry, April second. So we are ready to vote on that, so Mandy, uh, take the roll, please.
Butler?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
No.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
No.
Hopkins?
No.
So it's, it's not a, it's not a resolution.
Correct, so it's a motion, a procedural motion, mayor gets to break the tie. If you'd like me to discuss ramifications, I'm happy to.
Yeah, discuss ramifications, please.
So if you do not break the tie to table, so if you vote to table, then it's tabled. If you vote no, then it'll go to resolution, everyone can vote on the resolution today. If the resolution fails, then it's dead, but there's two opportunities for reconsideration in the next two meetings.
But with the reconsideration, Emily, this is Emily, the city attorney, I'm Emily Duthy. The procedure will be for it to be reconsidered, it has to be on the prevailing side.
Correct, yes.
That would have to introduce the resolution.
Correct.
So if, if it, the mayor, mayor's votes no, it doesn't, then we vote on this.
Yes.
It doesn't pass, then we have the next two meetings, which we wouldn't even be.
Not, that's not, that's, and I'll let you answer it.
So if the resolution dies today, meaning it doesn't get the votes to carry, then a mem, a, a council member that succeeded, meaning that it died, saying no, has to bring it in the next two meetings to be bid.
So one of the, one of the three that voted no would have to bring it up.
Whoever votes no on the resolution, not necessarily the motion, yes.
Yeah. Oh, votes on the resolution, not this motion.
Not the motion table.
So we, so we would bring it up, but it still wouldn't be before a budget session, right?
It would have, I, I don't know when the next two meetings are, but.
Well, the next, next meeting, Mandy would be, is it March fifth?
Yeah, March fifth.
So, and then March fifth and March nineteen, but if the resolution failed tonight, it could only be reconsidered if a member of the prevailing side introduces it or, or proposes to put it on the agenda. That's my understanding.
Correct.
So then, so the mayor needs to, uh, table it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
If he was playing pitch, yes.
Yeah. 'Cause, because we won't, 'cause we won't be passed the budget session in the two weeks, the two meetings that we have to do it. So you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to vote against me there.
I think I understand, I think I understand the voting.
You're ahead of me.
Uh, so. I want some assurance that we will get the thing to bid in April.
After, after.
After the budget.
So we can bring it up on the nineteenth of March and schedule it for April?
Well, this motion is put, tabling it until April. Your motion, table it until April.
Table, table, table till April, yeah. Yes, I'll do that, I'll bring it back up.
Well, we would just, we would come back and do the same motion, the same resolution.
Okay.
I don't need you to bring it up, I need you to vote yes to go to bid. At that time.
Yeah, yeah.
We will, we'll have the same presentation we saw tonight, we'll do the same. All right, then I will vote, I will vote yes on the motion to table. Okay, moving on, resolution number six, 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 two, entitled Resolution Terminating the Pella West Interchange Urban Renewal Plan for the Pella West Interchange Urban Renewal Plan area and ending the Pella West Interchange Urban Renewal Plan area. Mike?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and what we have this evening is actually a termination of a tax increment financing district and an urban renewal plan. This particular urban renewal plan covers the western portion of our city in the late nineties and was enacted for approximately twenty years. It has not been used over the last three years on this. And the area that it covered was exit forty of forty in Pella. And also, I believe, it extended down to the northern half of the Pella Municipal Airport, it was known as the West Interchange Tiff District on it. We have subsequently paid all the debt required for the Tiff District, and what's needed is to formally, formally retire the district. And the reason why this is somewhat of a pressing matter is, within our next probably thirty days, we're gonna be discussing a new urban renewal area, and encompasses a lot of the same area, but it is a different geographical area. Before we can consider the new urban renewal area and establishing a new Tiff District on the western side of our town, we have to retire the previous Tiff dis, Tiff District that we have. So the resolution that we have this evening would terminate the urban renewal plan and area, and then the ordinance would actually repeal the ordinance, uh, ten thirty-five on this as well. Now, because we view this as purely a housekeeping item, we are suggesting a waiver of the second and third readings this evening on the proposed ordinance. So, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions that council has on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike, so I'll entertain a motion for approval of re, of resolution number six, 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 two.
Shalom.
For DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We've set aside the rules in place.
Vote, vote, vote. We gotta do the ordinance first. You're jumping again.
I was, I was ready to jump again.
Okay, now we're gonna, now we're going to consider ordinance number ten thirty-five, entitled An Ordinance Replacing Ordinance Number four eight four, Providing For The Division Of Taxes Leaved On The Taxable Property In The Pella West Interchange Urban Renewal Plan Area In The City Of Pella, Iowa Pursuant To Section four oh three point one nine Of The Code Of Iowa. This is the first reading. So do I have a motion for approval?
I'm in support.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed.
You do a part.
Roll on, roll on.
We've set aside the rules in place on the third and final reading. For.
DeYoung, Hopkins, all in favor of that motion, please say yes, opposed, no, Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Now we need a motion to adopt ordinance number ten thirty-five.
Move to adopt.
For?
Rander Horse, Hopkins. All those in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. So we did all of that work there. Uh, can I get a motion for approval of the abstract of bills number twenty-one forty-five?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Rander Horse?
Support.
DeYoung, any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business that you'd like to address us with this evening?
I, I have something. Um, I was very much remiss at the last meeting, and it's been bothering me for two weeks. But we lost. me for two weeks. But we lost a thirty-year valued employee at the city level on February the fifth. His name was Michael Norman. And he was an amazing employee. He was an amazing father. He was a grandfather. And he was a surrogate father to a lot of bowlers in this community. And I just was wanting to ask if the chambers would mind just giving him a round of applause for thirty years of service.
Amazing guy.
Yes, he was.
And I think, I think we are planning on doing a tribute, entering something into the official records.
His CFP will be at the next council meeting to receive a proclamation.
Yeah, proclamation.
And you're all invited to come back.
All right, any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address us with this evening? If so, please step forward. Microphone, state your name and address. Try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi everyone, Janet Wendell, fifteen Bruce Lane. I know this isn't discussion time to comment, but can we get a yes or no head nod? Do we have a road to the rec center that I was asked to address tonight and talk about?
No, it hasn't. That wasn't discussed. I mean, we've discussed many times.
But do we have a road?
Nothing. We haven't approved anything yet with the rec center.
It's a separate project.
That's a separate deal.
Okay. It just seems like perhaps maybe if we're going out for bids, we should have a road. I don't know. Add that to the list.
Well, there will be a road along the east side.
That's definite? Okay.
Bruce, about seven sixty, two hundred and eighteen place. I'm not sure if I missed something here tonight, but the timing, there was much talk about having the numbers, having the numbers by budget time. The bids were due April second, and that's when you would receive the numbers. And the budget is on the end of March. So am I confused or I'm not?
Mr. Steve, I believe the bid letting, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeanette, was scheduled for March twenty-second. So we would have bid results on March twenty-second.
You have on the twenty-second and the opening would be.
Would be on the twenty-second.
Oh, it's set to April two up there, I thought.
That was the public hearing.
That council would consider, we hold the projects public hearing on April second, and council would consider potential construction contract that evening on it, awarding the contract that evening, so.
Which is a normal process. I go through a lot of bidding things also. And then just one comment. Mayor, that was a completely inappropriate statement that you are.
Hey Bruce, if you got something personal with me, call me up and we'll talk. I don't need public comments about me personally.
You said it in public that you want some assurances. That's inappropriate for a public service to demand that of fellow council members.
I didn't demand anything. I asked them a question.
No, I'm sorry.
I asked them a question.
You wanted assurances.
I'm not gonna argue with you.
I'm not either. You said.
Anyone else?
I'm going. I'm gonna get you out of this room. Okay, I know you've lived here for three years. I have been at that pool for twenty-one years.
Could we get your name?
Oh, sorry. I am Jane Hedren Rosenberg. Sorry, my name's so long. Whoever has to write that down. I live five fourteen Lincoln Street. I have lived here for twenty-one years, or been at the pool for twenty-one years. I've lived in this town my whole life. I've been involved in the pool since I was eight years old. Okay? For us to not get a bid. And it's just, I just don't understand. But anyway, for you to bring up Texas, fun fact, Texas stadiums hold thirty thousand people, or high school in Fort Worth. An average football stadium in Texas is one per school district, and it holds five thousand. I don't think anyone in our town has that. So don't bring things in that aren't relevant whatsoever to try and get a vote your way.
Jay Dix, ten thirteen Edgewater Drive, speaking on my own behalf, not for who I work for. You guys were hired for leadership, voted in for leadership, to say we don't need actual numbers. It's not leadership. There's too much pressure to make a decision. A number is a factual number. Get the factual number and then make a decision. That's what you were voted in for. To delay it, it means you're going through a budget process incomplete. Nobody would do that in business. So it's just disappointing that you went down that road, and it feels like political games. Thanks.
Tony Baca, one seventeen oh two Mill Drive. What's really disappointing is one time we come to this meeting and it's forty-seven million. Next time we come now, it's twenty-seven million. The oldest trick in the book is to get your developer or your bidding people to bring in the lowest bid they can. The other thing that's really disappointing is you want to go to all that work for two basketball courts. Two basketball courts. Since this conversation started years ago, we had to have more basketball courts, more basketball courts. There are two in this base plan. I think what council member Butler has suggested is some sage advice that some of you should really pay attention to and partner with Central College. They have ample basketball courts that they're willing to do stuff with this community on. And rushing to get that bid, I think they made the absolute right choice by holding them off until after the budget session.
Anyone else?
Patty Van Zanni, eleven seventeen Big Rock Park Road. And before everyone else spoke, I wanted to commend you on having an important discussion and being civil and getting the resolution on it and moving on. And I think that's really good. And after some of the council meetings we've had to sit through, it's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else?
Hi, Lurinda Bradley, five oh five Columbus. I am not here to talk about the rec center. Instead, I wanted to bring your attention to a program called the Certified Local Government Program. I've talked to a couple of you about it with various degrees of receptiveness. The rest of you would, you're gonna get an email from me or Lurinda promote. But we've been talking about budgets. We've been talking about deferred maintenance. And this program is essentially a program that is set up for governments to partner with state and federal preservation programs. So you would be partnering with the state, you would be partnering with National Work Service. For those of you who don't know me, I grew up in Pella. I lived in Missouri for ten years. I have a PhD in art history and archaeology. And I'm the National Register Coordinator. So I do work for the state, but I'm here in my capacity as a private citizen and as a member of the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission. Iowa has one of the largest certified local government programs in the nation. We have ninety communities and counties that are involved. Essentially, it's just the community saying that they are in partnership to preserve their historic resources. One of the major advantages is that you are eligible for a number of grants, but you are not eligible since you are not currently served by local government. Someone mentioned the tall tower. You all just voted to fund, sorry, I hate public speaking. You all funded the nomination for the fire department. All of those would be covered under grants. You paid for the community center to be nominated. That could have been covered under a grant. The community center would also be eligible for grants to offset some of the cost that the city is spending for that rehabilitation. Again, ninety communities across Iowa are taking advantage of this program. We are a community that uplifts our history, but yet we are not partnering with the organizations that provide the money, financial support, technical support, and assistance for cities like ours. Thank you.
Lurinda, Lurinda?
Yes.
I, I agree with you on CLGs. And it's been something that, again, along with Caldwell Park, I've been thinking about for years. If this was something we would get on the agenda, would you be willing to come back and guide us through a discussion? Because we are leaving money on the table, valuable money on the table. It's not going to change the structure of our government. We're still gonna have a council and a mayor and everything else. It just opens a revenue stream. And instead of being so afraid of it, I think we need to explore it.
And we are most of the way there. Part of the process of becoming a certified local government is that you have to have ordinance, and you have to have this Historic Preservation Commission. We have those. They already exist. The ordinance would just need a little bit of tweaking.
Yeah.
I am happy to answer any questions on a one-on-one basis. I cannot present information on the CLG governor program. As a state employee, my coworker would do that. So I can, again, be here as a private citizen, but I can't present the.
With that female sign phrase?
Allison Archibald.
Okay, okay. I would encourage everyone to reach out to Lurinda if it is.
I will give you my private email. Happy to talk about it. But again, communities are paying for surveys to understand what historical resources they have. Those are tens of thousands of dollars. Communities are applying for adaptive reuse for their community centers or old high schools. We're doing that, but we're paying for the whole thing when you can use tax credits, you can use grants to help offset that cost. So this is a pot of money that, again, ninety other communities are taking advantage of, and we are not.
Absolutely. And you may need public speaking, but you do a marvelous job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else?
Kara Grunaboom, eleven twelve Lincoln Street. So I just want to talk briefly about the competition pool. So our kids were in, have been in swim team like four years. I was in it for ten years. Rec, Y, high school, all of that. We traveled to Newton twice a day sometimes. The roads weren't good. We had to pay for all of that out of our own pocket. School didn't pay for it, transportation, all that. It was a headache, you know. So having a competition pool, how am I public speaking? Having a competition pool would be amazing. It's frustrating that people in this town don't understand how important it is for our children. Sorry. It, it, I'm just really passionate about the pool itself. All the other stuff is great. We were in Iowa City this weekend. It's so much money that we spend for these places that we go to. We went to Iowa City. We stayed there three days. It's a lot of money we spent. You know, you guys went to Knoxville. That pool has been the same since I was in swim team many years ago. You know, the transition of going into the locker room, if you're a USA sanctioned, you can't go into that locker room like, like what we do to go in there. And some people don't understand what our pool has now. It's not acceptable. Our kids cannot dive into this pool. We can't practice like we should. It's just a real disgrace of what we have. But we're lucky that we have it right here in our town. I'm not saying that. But it's just something that we really need. And if you want to take, like, cut the budget, that rec portion of that pool, we need that. Because the people that go in for exercise or whatever, they're not gonna want to go into our competition pool where it's colder. They don't want that. And we at first, our family at least, we were not about the extra stuff in that rec center. But when we went to Iowa City this weekend, it was amazing. The people used it. So I would look at their pool. I know it's a lot different than what you guys were thinking, but it was just utilized so well. The structure, I don't know how the locker rooms were, but it's just, it's just something that we really need. We have over a hundred kiddos that are in swim team. That's a lot. You know, and we come from all over. We have Pella, we have Knoxville, we have Oskaloosa. You know, they all come here to swim because we have a great coach, you know. Sorry. So just really consider that competition pool and go swim in our current pool if you haven't been there lately. Our kids would love to go swim with you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we will adjourn to our policy and planning first fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget process and maximum property tax notice. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for our presentation on this item. And what we're here to talk about this evening is a state legislature requirement. It's important to note, on an annual basis, the state is requiring that cities certify their maximum property tax levy. That, and the intention of this requirement is to identify a rate would be the maximum amount that the city council intends to establish as its property tax levy. One of the items that we have is a timing issue on hand. If you recall, we said our budget work sessions are on March twenty-fifth and March twenty-sixth. During that meeting, council will have a recommendation on the property tax levy from city administration. The state is requiring that the notice get mailed out to every resident within Pella. And we have to have that notice to the county auditor by the fifteenth for the max property tax levy. And so in order to do that, on March fifth, we'll have a resolution that will establish our maximum property tax levy. Now, a couple of items to note. We could establish a rate and levy something lower than that amount. But the key thing is for the state of Iowa, you cannot exceed the rate. And we, that requirement was in place last year for a portion. It was a requirement by the state for the operating portion of the levy. And for the existing council members that were on last, last term, you may have recalled, for a maximum rate, we established an operating levy rate at a dollar over our actual rate. And it was something that we did receive questions on, but at that time, when we looked at the operating rate is the, into the story is last year, we stayed at our existing property tax rate for the twenty-second year. But we actually established a dollar over that for the operating portion because we wanted to make sure we had flexibility to fund the Pella ambulance on it. So much the same as the story about is what I'm agreeing to walk through this evening on the matter is when we talk about the maximum property tax rate, please keep in mind that the maximum rate, you do not have to levy that. You're under no obligation, but it's simply intended, is what we've intended in the past, is to give the city financial flexibility in case the city council did want to extend or increase the city's levy amounts. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And I believe we've covered all of this. If you were to ask today on this, and again, we're extremely early in the budget process, what we think the maximum property tax levy amount is to give the city financial flexibility, both from an operational standpoint, the operating levy, as well as the debt service levy, we would say it's a dollar ten increase to the city's levy rate is what we would recommend would be at eleven thirty. Does not mean the city council would establish that rate, but it would give you financial flexibility in case you chose to go up that high. And it would be comprised of two items that we would have. One would be a debt service levy increase of thirty-three cents, and then an operating levy increase of seventy-seven cents. And Mandy, I think on the next slide we have an explanation of this. Let's pick off the operating first on that seventy-seven cents. It's much the same story as what we had last year, the funding of the Pella ambulance. And I'll state for the record and continue to state for the record, believe the city council made the right decision in adopting or taking over the Pella ambulance. The truth of the matter was, there were serious questions whether that service would continue in Pella absent the city council's action on an essential service. It may have been in jeopardy. By taking over the Pella ambulance, we are facing roughly about a six hundred thousand dollar deficit on the Pella ambulance as far as the funding. We've been working with Marion County and other entities in Marion County in trying to propose an essential services tax in Marion County. We'll continue to work on that with our other entities and trying to get to that referendum date. But as of this date, that has not occurred on the matter. So that's a portion of the seventy-seven cent increase. If you were to ask our finance director, Brian, we've on insurance related increases, Brian, I think what we're facing is about a twenty-five percent increase on city insurance for property insurance. And this is across the state of Iowa on the matter. So costs are going up. The last item that we have is this year is the first year of the state property tax legislation. One of them is the max property tax notice that we're talking about. But the other items that they've had is there is property tax cuts back in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. And at the time, to help offset the deficits, the cities, the state promised funding or backfill, state backfill. What we've been informed is that. What we've been informed is that backfill will be evaporating or decreasing and fully eliminated, I believe, within three fiscal years. I may be a little bit off on that, but the story is, is when we looked at the state funding cuts that originated from back in the mid-2014, 2015, is that we'll be receiving $46,000 less in revenue from the state of Iowa for this next year. And when we talk about our next budget year, that would be the fiscal year starting on July first, 2024, and extending through June thirtieth, 2025. So that's the seventy-seven cents on the operating side. The debt service side, what we have on here, these would be new projects that previously we have not levied a debt service levy increase on it. And without seeking council's input on it, if we listed everything up there and the maximum amount for each one of these projects, it'd be roughly about a thirty-three cent increase on the debt service levy. Now, I want to preface once again, we're extremely early in the budget process. The max property tax notice is two weeks from now. There's a good chance that number could be less, might not be fully eliminated, but we will work very hard on that as well. And the important thing is that we have a dialogue. And I also want to stress to members in the audience and those watching at home, again, what we're really talking about is do we want to establish an operating levy that's higher than our existing operating levy and a debt service levy higher than our existing debt service levy to give us financial flexibility to consider these items on here? That's the key question. It does not obligate the city to levy that tax. It simply gives us the financial flexibility. What would happen, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, is March fifth, we approved the max levy notice. That goes to the county auditor, gets mailed out to all residents in Pella. We would hold a max property tax public hearing sometime in early April. That would be separate and distinct from the city's budget process, and that is our obligation. During the budget process, it's very likely that we'll be considering a different levy rate, potentially lower than the max levy rate if we proceed in that direction. So, Mandy, let's go ahead. Is there any other slides with this? I believe this states everything, and what we have is right now, I want to stress, if we were to go right now, we said we wanted to give the city council the maximum financial flexibility to consider projects and options to consider projects. We'd be at eleven thirty. And it's very similar to what happened last year when we proposed increasing for the max property tax levy for just the operating, we proposed a dollar. And that was incurred in large part to funding the Pella ambulance. So, Mayor, I know this is a confusing subject. It's caused a lot of discussion in the city government world on this as well. But we'll do our best to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Questions, comments?
I know last year, we talked a lot about it, establishing that max rate is a requirement, but we didn't change the max rate in the, in the end. So we need to put something out there and then, when we get through the budget process, then that's when we actually adopt what the rate is. This is not adopting anything. This is just putting it out there. Potential.
So anybody have questions or comments? All right, and we'll move on to the city hall annex renovation project.
Okay. Have an exciting project that we're anxious to share information on this evening. And before I turn the floor over to Mr. Jerry Vitus, our planning and zoning director, I would also like to state, Mr. Kim Mulch is in attendance, our architect on this particular project. And for those of you that may not be familiar with this project, the city received a generous gift from the community enhancement organization. And this was the former daycare building that was located at 215 Main Street. And it's something that fits very nicely into our facility plans because what the proposed use we have for this facility is to move our planning and zoning department into this facility. We're also planning on holding a majority of the planning and zoning department's board meetings in this facility. Now, keep in mind, they serve five boards, and there's numerous meetings outside of city council meetings that would take place here. In addition, we have preliminary plans on moving the DOT driver's license stations to this building as well. Now, what we're here to talk about this evening is the floor plans, the proposed layouts, and the concept that has been developed by city staff as well as engineer for the project. And since we're talking about budgets, let's go ahead and before I turn the floor to Jerry, to talk about where we came in on the project. We started off with the budget that was, has improved a project budget for this project of 1.1 million dollars. The base bid that we have this evening, that we're going to be talking about, is 1,255,000. And then we also have alternates that would take the project up to 1,363,000. Now, what our thoughts were from city administration's recommendation and council's free to instruct to proceed with the project this evening and go out and bid for it. Because the project was over budget by $155,000 and because we're within thirty days of, of the city's budget, we had proposed, considering this project as a part of the city's budget process on there, on it as well. But once again, council can seek, can instruct staff, and we could proceed with this project as well. So again, we had a project budget of 1.1 million. We're $155,000 over budget. And our recommendation was to consider it during the budget process, but council's the ultimate authority on that, and we could proceed with the project if council feels comfortable with that as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to go ahead and turn the floor to Jerry and have him walk us through the project.
Thank you, my members of council. This is quite an exciting project. The building, roughly nine thousand square feet, over three floors. I'll, I'll quite briefly go through this. The basement will actually provide a city retention records facility. Basically broken up into records for finance. We have to keep them in sometimes up to five, seven years. Human resources records, sometimes those have to be at least seventy years. Correct that, Mandy?
We have a lot of that are just forever.
Forever?
Yes.
And then we'll have additional storage spaces that we can pull out of Denny's Public Works area. So it'll be a centralized location. First floor is the planning and zoning department. Basically fifteen hundred square feet, split half of that. The other fifteen hundred square feet will be divided between what you see as a community room and what I consider the most exciting spot, a new office for the Department of Transportation. The idea is that this is, is the carrot and the stick mentality, hoping that we could get them to bring more of a full-time DOT office to Pella by offering this incentive to them. The third floor is basically, we're just shelling it out. It'll be completely provided with ADA restrooms, a future employee break room, and basically painted. That will be left over for expansion for other city departments down the road at a later point in time. They would be responsible for the TI costs there. So if there are really any questions on the project, I'll be glad to answer them, but that is in a nutshell what we are proposing. Thank you.
Where are community services going to go during renovation of the existing community center?
That is the perfect location for that second level and the top stairs. That would give them about, you know, three thousand square feet of potential space to house employees or facilities or programs during that renovation. Thank you very much.
Mandy, do we have a diagram and the floor plan for one of the slides? It was included in the council packet.
Yes.
Okay, any comments, questions?
Yeah, we got another project we don't have a solid price for.
Well, let me explain the reasoning for this one. We actually had a project budget last year and an engineer's estimate on the project. And what I don't know, it said if council would like to seek bids on the project, you're always free to do that. My thought was, when we were establishing a maximum property tax levy on it, we had projects over here that's additional funding, and we've had other projects that we've also directed to go back through the budget as well. So once again, we will not have solid numbers on here. But again, when you look at the, the overage of the 155,000, I wanted to make sure council was okay with it. So it's just a recommendation, and council can proceed as it desires on the project.
Just to state that your concern is the price will be significantly more than 155,000 over.
Well, yeah. Here's, here's my concern would be going through the budget process on this particular project. I'm talking about the projects that, if you remember during the max property tax levy, there is projects in there that had to prove budgets by the city council as well. There's some of those projects that are over budget as well. And with those projects, and I've communicated to a few of you that have been associated with it, our recommendation is to go back through the city's budget process. That's what we've consistently done. What my concern would be is if we stated that we wanted to go ahead with the project, and let's just take the base bid. What I would state is if we wanted to fund that, we would issue instead of a $700,000 bond issue, we would issue a $900,000 bond issue on it. But without council weighing in on the other projects, it's difficult for me to make that recommendation, particularly ones that we've been a part of, that council's approved project budgets for, that are also over budget, that we're stating have to go back through the budget process. And so we're just trying to be consistent with other projects that we've had that, that previously received budgets that are also over.
Okay, so what are you, what are you looking for from the council here to move forward?
Yeah, what I'm, I'm looking for is in the packet, is there any questions on the floor layout? And then also, if we did want to go ahead with the project budget, we had, we do have a funding source ready for this, or if you'd like to consider it during the budget process, that, that would be the second item.
Do we really have any choice when things start happening over at the old community center? Those people have to go somewhere.
Yeah. Well, this would be a, I view this project as, this is something that's needed at the city of Pella. And again, but I wanted to be respectful and consistent with other projects that we face that had similar, similar overages on their budget as well.
So you, you would issue a bond to pay for this?
Yeah, the, the funding source was approved in the budget. I may be a little bit off on this, but it was a 1.1 million dollar project. The budget had a $700,000 bond issue at, at the time, and it had $400,000 of local option funds. We have the $400,000 of local option funds, but that got us up to the 1.1 million. Now we're looking at 1.3 million. And so instead of a $1,700,000 bond issue, it'd be a $900,000 bond issue. So it'd be increase in, in potential debt issue.
Well, this will be a silly question, I, I bet, but why don't we just pay for it? We got money. You got the money?
Well, in paying for it, there, using cash on hand, we've also proposed cash on hand on other projects that are being, using our cash resources. And so that's why with it is, I don't, we don't necessarily have available cash on hand to pay for it with cash on hand. Now, when I'm basing that on, is this would have been last year's budget. This project was budgeted for the current fiscal year. It's included in the capital improvement project. It has a financial plan. It did not, it had 400,000 of cash on hand. It didn't necessarily have 1.3 million dollars of cash on hand. If I were to do that, or if we were to do that, we may have to come back for other projects that we're considering cash on hand and take a look at those projects.
So the real, I mean, we have, had the financing, everything figured out for 1.1, or 155,000 more cost. So that, that's really the question. We okay using, using, we were to use some debt financing for the 1.1 to use it for the extra 155?
It would be interesting for me to see what, where all the cash is committed on these other projects. Don't need to do it now, but, you know, by the time next week. Where, where is all the cash committed? Because I see the cash, but I don't know where the commitment is on it, so I appreciate that.
Okay?
Okay.
But it's a good project.
It's a, it's a very good project, and I, I want to make sure the council understands we're very thrilled with this project at the CBO, but we just have what we consider a funding issue that we have, something that we have a proposed solution. But likewise, we, the dilemma that we have is for other projects that came over the budget amount. We've stated it's pretty much, and that's been the way it's been for years, to go back through the city's budget process, so.
Okay. Move on to requests for solid waste.
Yeah.
Contract extension?
I, yes, Mr. Mayor, and this is a continuation of the discussion from the last policy and planning session that we had on February sixth, where we discussed the city sanitation contract. It's set to expire on July thirty-first of this year. And at that meeting, we talked about seeking bids for, for this sanitation contract. Council gave direction to staff that they wanted to talk to, or wanted staff to sit down and talk with the, or the current provider on the service to see if they would be interested in extending the city's contract on it. Let's pick off a couple of items that we have. Once again, the contract expires on July thirty-first of this. And from a legal standpoint, Emily, feel free to chime in if I misrepresent anything. There's no requirement from either a state or federal level to bid these services on it. What the city's personnel are not, the city's purchasing policy states is three sealed bids, if possible, would be required under the city's personnel, not purchasing policy. The council has the discretion, if they choose not to bid it and award the contract out, they're certainly in a position to do that. We met with Midwest Sanitation, and what Midwest Sanitation is proposing is no change in services. There'd be a three-year term contract. And Mandy, I'm not sure if we have kind of a summary of these items on it. There'd be no, no, no change in services. It'd be a three-year extension. And as far as the annual price increase, what they'd like to have is it be linked to whatever the general wage adjustment the city council provides to the city employees. And so on an annual basis, you may recall that the city usually has, in fact, we've had for the last twenty-some years, I believe, most of those years where we've made what's called a cost of living adjustment to the general wage scale on it. Last year, it was 4.8% on that. What they'd like to have is their contract would automatically increase, the price of the service would automatically increase for whatever percent that we give the city employees over these three years. But the big takeaway is there'd be no change in service, and the, the contract would have a general cost escalator, and it'd be tied to whatever we award the city employees. So with that, Mr. Mayor, what we're here to ask about is if council wants to renew the contract with Midwest Sanitation or if he'd like us to seek bids for these services.
I would, I would renew the contract.
Yep, I agree.
Let's keep it local.
Yep.
I agree.
One question though, would this be cost of living increase or merit and cost of living?
Yeah, we're going to, we call it a wage adjustment. It doesn't have the step increases. This is the general cost of living, what people usually refer to as being a wage adjustment.
And I'll chime in here and just make sure the clarification is that if you believe that this proposed price with that increase is a competitive price that you wouldn't find elsewhere, then you can forego the city's normal requirements for the purchasing policy to proceed those bids.
Yeah, I guess that was going to be my question. If, basically, we're going against the city's purchasing policy, do we have to state that or do something?
I think if you believe that this is a competitive price, that's a discussion that you should have, and you don't think that you'll find anything that's lower, more responsible, responsive.
Well, I think the discussion we had last time was pretty evident. Everybody wanted to keep it local and renew it, so I don't think that has changed. So that's the direction we need.
Okay, thank you.
All right, fourth item, city attorney representation at city council meetings?
Okay. I'll try to get the summary on this. This is a request that we received from an elected official, and the specific request was to have the city attorney regularly attend the city council meetings on this. And through the discussions, I'm sure it'll come up for the reasons for the request. Couple just items that we want to make sure council's aware of. For the city attorney to travel and in their contract, correct Emily's firm on this, whether it's Emily or another attorney that would attend our meetings, the travel time and meeting attendance is at $200 per hour on it. And from city administration's standpoint, we don't have issues or concerns with the city attorney attending the meetings on it. But we may want to just, I'll just throw this out. We may want to have some parameters for the city attorney to attend. And what we wanted to state is we don't have a lot of them, but occasionally, we have the fifteen-minute meeting on, on it as well. meeting on it as well. And so, those 15 minutes, it may not be necessary to have legal representation at the meeting. And so that would be our only concern, is if we had some parameters on there. One of the items that we had is, if we have public bidding projects on the agenda, closed sessions, rezoning requests, where items typically come up, or could come up that require legal council's guidance, those would be items that, you know, would be good candidates for the city attorney to attend the meeting. So with it, that's the item that we have, we were simply requested to put this on the agenda, so we're following through on that.
Okay.
So we had city attorney in attendance for what, two, three years in the past?
Way more than that, I would say.
Yeah.
I think when I was in two terms, I think, what was it, Stiverston, what was his name?
Yeah, yeah, Stiverston.
Entire time?
Most of the time, it was a waste of his time.
Yeah, that, well, I don't want to say, I think what happened was, we used to have regular city attorney attendance, and the question was, kind of this issue on the parameters, if there's something that we feel that the city attorney should be at, let's invite him then, but not necessarily just an automatic invitation for the city attorney to come, so.
I think that that's a good suggestion. I think Emily proved this evening that her advice was invaluable as we went through a voting process, and we can look at our agenda and see that there might be some stumbling blocks. I think it is very prudent for us to have her here. But the 15-minute would not be that style of meeting.
It's a beautiful drive.
It is, it is.
Till you've done it over.
So, I suppose the question would be, do we want to try to establish something specific, or?
I believe with discretion.
Yeah, is the staff gonna, gonna say when they think we need somebody? Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay.
Tony Callen has a pretty good idea of what could be.
Yeah.
Legal attending.
All right. And then last on our list is shared leave policy with a personnel policy management.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Mandy Smith, our city clerk and HR director, to explain more details on this, but just a high-level overview. The city council is gracious enough to approve a city sure leave program, and what the city employees were concerned with is, in the event that we had an employee that gets sick, or had a serious health issue, and they did not have leave to cover their tenure, we had a program developed that city employees could donate to cases. They're evaluated by my office, and they are the extreme of extreme events on it, the ones that we've had approved. We've recently had a very unfortunate incident where we approved a sure leave program in case, and then individual employee passed away soon afterwards, the first time we've ran into this. The program, when we initially established it, I don't believe it addressed directly what happens in the event that an employee passes away. And so with that, Mandy, I'll let you fill in the details on this.
Yeah, that is correct. We addressed if an employee comes back from duty prematurely and doesn't use that time, but never an instance where the employee passes away. And in this case, the reason I suggested bringing it up for consideration is, mostly every employee that donated doesn't even want their time back, they want it to go to their families. So, pretty heartwarming to see our team come together in instances like that. So, this is an employee request.
Very generous one.
Yeah.
Best sense of game from the bottom up.
All right, thank you.
All right. So do I have a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter 21.5, one, paragraph J, to discuss the purchase of sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure would be reasonably expected to increase the price, the governmental body would have to pay for the property, or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property? So, Ms. Strylan, Carl Stone, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Deion Strylan.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Deion Strylan.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.